This is the regular city council meeting from Inetrista, June 2nd, 2025. First order, I'd like to ask that you all join me in pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome everyone here this evening, as well as later on if you might be watching on YouTube. Glad that you're watching. Just a reminder for those here, if you have a cell phone, please remember I'm on airplane mode or silent, so they don't disrupt the meeting. And I'm going to start out with introductions. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor. And to my left, we have council members Kathleen Refkin, Peter Vickery, Claudia Lacy, and Brian Govan. And then staff that's present this evening. I'm going to start out with Alison Foskey, who is our city engineer with WSB. Gary Peters is our director of public works. There's too many publics here. And then Ally Paulus is our assistant administrator. And then to my right, we have our administrator Jasper Krugel. Brian Grimm is our finance director. And then our chief of police Craig Squires. So, and we also have Erin Volmer with us this evening, who will be updating us on our water treatment plant. So with that, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? If none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin is our second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Govan. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next we move on to, we don't have any special presentations and we don't have anybody signed up under persons to be heard. So we're going to move on to consent agenda items. Are there any you wish to remove?
I did have a question about item G, the claims.
Okay.
I just noticed that there was checks cut to MediaCom and Midco for internet. That's one of them. I'm sure with that, is that for different local buildings within the city that are getting it?
Yeah, if I may, I can answer that. So, our primary ISP is Midco. And what we did is we have the SD WAN switch that we just put in allows for two ISPs. So what we did is we dialed back the MediaCom connection, so we have redundant ISPs. That's kind of a best practice for, for cities. So in case one goes down, we still have the backup. We're paying, I think, the lowest amount that we can for our organization for the MediaCom one, which is our backup. So that's why we have two.
Okay, good deal. So I'll make sure we weren't double dipping.
No.
All right.
I had a question on item D, St. Bonnie.
Fire department contract reconciliation request? Okay, we can talk about it now then, real quick.
Okay. No, I was just wondering why we didn't claim it back? Was it just so that we kind of paid forward our contribution?
It was kind of, I covered it last time, they're going to use it to buy some equipment.
Oh, okay.
So that's why.
Okay, okay.
We've done that every time. And it basically, we're going to have to pay for the equipment at some point in time. So we just say, instead of them cutting us back a check or.
Could have bought it last year, he just waited, and so now he's just going to use the extra.
I don't want to brought the money back, but usually we've left it in the capital reserve.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then consent agenda items include A, approve our work session meeting minutes from May 19th, 2025. Approve our city council regular meeting minutes from May 19th, 2025. Approve our 2025 step increases for non-union employees. Accept the St. Boniface Fire Department Contract Reconciliation Request. And E is accept resignation for Assistant City Administrator Ally Paulus effective June 20th, 2025. Boo. Hate to see you go. And then, but we understand, you have a wonderful opportunity. And then F is approve our license agreement for 4090 Enchanted Lane. And G is a resolution to approve claims. And H is a resolution to approve equipment C and P purchase to replace a 2007 Bobcat Skid Loader. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through H?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lucy, is our second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Any further questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. And we'll move on now to business items. And we have Erin Volmer here this evening, updating us on the water treatment plant. And you're going to tell us it's really, really a whole lot cheaper, right?
I wish.
And thank you for joining us.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, thanks for having me back. Yeah, so I'm here to provide an update to the water treatment plant design. That was a spoiler alert. Ten items for today, we'll review the, some 3D renderings from the interior and exterior of the facility. Talk about a cost update, and we'll talk about a final schedule. So, in front of you, you probably have a little sheet with some QR codes on it. We won't go through them in detail, but if you're curious what the inside of a water plant looks like, or at least the inside of your water plant will look like, you can scan those QR codes and they'll take you to a kind of a spot inside the facility that you can look around and see the pipes. So, the colors aren't real accurate, but in general, it gives you a feel for the. The image you see out there on the left is kind of what it's going to feel like when you're inside, when you're looking at the QR code. So, we'll just briefly kind of talk through the different spaces, the different levels of the facility. So this is a basement section view of the water treatment plant. So we have kind of the main area of the basement where that bullet number one is. It's basically a basement pipe gallery, that's where some of the water is being piped from the filters to the clear well and back and forth. And then the tanks on the left and the right are reclaim tanks. So when we do a backwash of your filters, we put the water in those tanks, we hold it, let any iron and manganese settle out, and then we recycle the decanted water off the top back to the treatment plant. So the water plant is very efficient from a water reuse standpoint. And we've got some other small recycle pumps in the basement. And then you can see the clear well, just to the bottom there. And that's where we store the finished water, and then we have the pumps that you'll see in the next slide that distribute the water. So, that QR code.
Erin, just out of curiosity, so the iron and manganese settles down, but how, does it, is it 100% you take out the manganese and iron? Or is there a certain percentage that still remains in the water that's pumped back into the system?
So, we, we filter out as much as we can.
Right.
To get it below your secondary limit for iron and manganese. So, it doesn't go to zero.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, very low.
Of iron and manganese, to the point where most people wouldn't notice.
Okay.
Any residual.
Okay.
And what happens to the iron and manganese once it's pulled out? Does this go to a landfill, or?
So it actually stays in a liquid form. So whatever settles out into the bottom of that tank, we kind of accumulates over time, and then we pump that out into the sanitary sewer. So there's not, no solids that are removed from this facility, it's all, goes out in a liquid form.
Which then eventually goes into the river.
Yep.
I think it goes down to.
Waste water system, the wastewater plant, and then back to.
That's your council's problem.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is the main level view, you can see the parking lot there in dark gray. We've got a small admin building, and then the pipe gallery, and then the clear well and pumps there on the, kind of towards the back of the facility. So if we zoom in a little bit.
You know, Erin, just for reference, what are you calling the front? Is that facing Highway 7?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
It would be.
It'd be turned around.
Yeah, so the.
And that's fine, I just was.
The parking lot area would face.
Parking lot is front.
Would be front, that'd be facing the homes.
Yeah.
Oh, it's facing the homes, okay.
The white area there where the.
Yep, where the tank is.
Where the integral tank would be, would be towards Highway 7.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So this is an image from the top of the plant, you can see the pipe gallery there, and then the filters on both sides. So there's four filters. If we take one filter offline for backwash, we can treat 2,100 gallons a minute with the three that remain. So there's some redundancy there, but that's typical standard when we design treatment facilities. There's your high service pump station, so this pumps the water that's in that clear well out into the distribution system. Again, we talked about that early on, that we put enough storage onsite to serve you through 2040 as far as storage capacity needs. And these pumps are designed to pump 2,800 gallons per minute out into the distribution system. So slightly more than your treatment capacity, just to handle how, you know, your daily demand. This is a chlorine room. So you can see we'll have six chlorine cylinders online with a few in there as well for spares. So that's for disinfection and oxidation of your iron and manganese. And then we have a few other chemical rooms there. Number six and seven are, six is fluoride, seven is of polyphosphates for lead and copper management. And then the QR codes will kind of show you those rooms if you.
So fluoride. Not everybody needs, that's a good thing.
No, 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 we're not going to get into that. I'm sorry, but.
Is, I have to put it in per state and federal regulations.
So it's, okay.
I mean, it is what it is at this point. If, if for some reason the EPA decides to remove it, you can turn the chemical off at that point.
Thank you.
Anything for iron and manganese removal. And then this is the upper level of the water treatment plant. Zoom in a little bit. You can see that large green box is your aerator. So we bring water in to the basement of the plant, all the way upstairs, goes through a large aluminum box that pushes air through it. And we aerate the water to oxidize the iron, so we're not using a chemical process there. It's just using natural oxidation. And then we have basically doors into the filter bays on the left and right that you can walk into and look into the top of the filters. Exterior rendering is what everyone really cares about, because I know the stuff inside really isn't that interesting to most people, so.
No, it's interesting.
I'll watch through the other one.
For perspective, I think to your earlier question, orientation, so north being up.
Okay.
The Woodland Cove homes, you can see the berm there that we put in to kind of shield the homes from the water plant. So the homes are to the top of the slide, Highway 7 is to the bottom. So, look from, from the parking lot, looking at the water plant, so this is looking south towards Highway 7. This is what the front entrance of the water plant would look like.
How tall is it?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-five?
Yeah, probably less than 35, but pretty close.
Thirty-three, thirty-four, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so in that range. We're using precast tip-up panels, pretty standard for water plant construction. There's a little bit of a texture to those panels. You can't really tell on the top portion, but the bottom, there's a slight difference between the bottom and the top, just to give it, break it up a little bit. We do have a couple of windows on the admin space, but the rest of the facility is pretty much precast tip-up wall panels. They're insulated, so there's concrete on both sides and then insulated. It's a sandwich panel, is what they call it. Yeah, and then there's a little awning over the main entrance.
Do the pumps be audible from the outside of the building?
You won't hear the high source.
Do you do the landscaping, or do we?
Gary. Gary.
Gary volunteered.
What was that? I can't hear the question, I'm sorry.
He does the landscaping.
Well, now who pays for the original bushes?
So.
It's a small cost, but.
Yeah, so the trees that we, so there are some trees that are currently planted on top of the berm. We have to take part of the berm away to put in a stormwater pond, so we'll transplant those trees and move them elsewhere. There will be very minimal landscaping around this facility, really what.
You're looking at it right there.
We felt like it made some sense about a curb and a few shrubs up front, just for plowing and maintenance. But that's about it. The rest will basically be grass, we'll probably do more of a natural prairie over top of the clear well, just for, you know, low maintenance type, so. But it should be pretty basic.
Wildflowers. I like that you mentioned this, but you were saying natural grasses. I don't know if any of you have driven by the Met Council, but it's a weed fest. It looks like we should, you know, someone should mow the lawn and build them. And it doesn't look like they have a plan, and it says, don't mow, we have a three-year plan. It's, it's, I challenge you to go look at this.
I guarantee you, if that thing gets taken over by weeds, every resident in Woodland Cove will be complaining about it. When I have to make sure.
Weeds at the main entrance.
Just that our city represents itself better than other cities and their public buildings.
It depends.
This is lovely.
It depends on the seed mix quality you're using too. I mean, I often tell those two people, you know, the stuff you buy at Menards, 10% of it's going to be, you know, or it could be up to almost 30% is not just weeds. If you take 30 of them, you look how small they are, and I look at the comments of the bag, you need a lot of weeds. I mean, if we do this, it'll be a lot more quality seed that we would use on top of it. So we don't want a weed bed either that we have to maintain, you know, it should be something that we're going to like, so.
But good point. Okay.
So, again, the coloring on this one isn't great, just based on the rendering, but this is basically just an isometric from that same side, so this will be looking south. If we go to the other corner of the building, this would be looking southwest. So we have a small chemical delivery garage door there, a few doors on the, on the north end for other chemical and access points. You can see some of the vents and louvers on the roof, so that's necessary for interior ventilation. And then we've got kind of the sidewalk.
But you're not going to see those. They're really high, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Woodland Cove might, because they're kind of up the hill a little bit.
Yeah.
They're not that tall.
Yeah.
And it's really hard to avoid putting equipment on a roof in this type of facility.
Yeah.
This is looking north, so you can see the driveway kind of off into the distance. That would be us coming in, so this would be looking northeast. Again, the, it's a big wall, it's pretty basic, but again, we tried to keep finishes to a minimum from a cost standpoint.
So sponsorship on the side.
I think, no logo, just.
Less attention to a water plant's better, though.
Yeah, really, no, it is.
I mean, we don't, we don't want to draw a lot of attention to, you know, to them as a point of, you know. We could put the, I mean, if you want to, we could put it on there.
Will there be a fence?
Yes, you have to.
Right, so where will, how close, or where?
So we don't, yeah, we don't have the fence in the rendering, but you can see the cars there. Our plan right now is off of the northwest and northeast corner of the facility, you'll have basically slide gates to get access to the sidewalk around it. And then the backside of the facility will just be fenced in. So, basically, you can drive right up to the front of the water plant. One, there'll be a swing gate on the drive-in to prevent people from driving all the way in. But if you get past the swing gate, you can drive right up to the water plant. But then to, to get to the backside of the plant, you have to go through the gates. And then you can, there's the buried clear well out back, so you can kind of see the hatch is there out back. But for most people, they won't even know it's there, it'll be a great.
So that's a plus, so you can always tell the people in Woodland Cove, at least you're not, we're looking at a second water tower.
Yes. And then this is southeast corner looking.
Water tower right now.
Yeah, so this is the other corner of the back of the facility. So again, it's pretty basic, you can see the buried clear, or can't see the buried clear well, and then the sidewalk around the building. What we don't show here is the generator, so that large concrete pad kind of in the bottom right corner of this slide, there'll be a generator there. So it is an exterior generator. It does have a little bit of noise when it's running, but it's about 70 decibels, which is essentially truck traffic, which, we're right off Highway 7 anyways, I don't know that anyone would really notice it.
So how far away are you from the nearest home? You're quite a ways.
Yeah, if that's on the south side, you are.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's another good point, is it's on the southeast side of the building, so the building will block most of that anyways. You're probably 400, 500.
I was going to say, quite a ways.
Yeah. So that was rendering costs. So, we talked about soliciting estimates from contractors, so we did talk to two different contractors, they looked at it. We received quite a range of estimates, which was not frustrating, to say the least. So Magni Construction, both Magni and Rice Lake are well-known contractors in the industry, they will both be bidding this project. They were both very interested in the project. Magni estimated somewhere between 12.7 and 14 million.
Yeah, we love their numbers.
Lake estimated 24 million, so we had a $10 million gap.
Wow. Wow.
And if, we, they received the 60% set of plans, so.
Oh, so only 60?
Finalized.
Okay.
But it at least gave them enough information to take off quantities for concrete and precast and things like that, which are the big ticket items. We're estimating somewhere in the $19 million range, based on what we know about the project. And based on what I know about both contractors, I think Rice Lake is being very conservative in their number, because they know that these numbers get talked about, and it's a low bid project. So they don't want people to think it's, they can do it cheaper. There's a little bit of gamemanship.
Yeah, yeah.
And I truly think we're in that $19 million range.
We like 14 better, we like the 14 better.
I do too.
So Erin, you have to play the game, you have to say, you know, we're really expecting it to come.
So we are, we're currently working on the 90% estimate this week, so we should know more in the next week or so on where we really think that number's going to be. But that's my estimate right now, it's about 19 million. We recommend holding about 2.5% to 3% after your bid for.
Contingency.
For change orders and things that we just discovered, that we maybe didn't plan for. So, so if we, kind of taking that recommendation, if we use our current 60% estimate, that includes a 7.5% contingency. So we've brought that contingency down as design has progressed. So that puts us at about 18.7 right now. We'll update that number in the next week or two. My hope is we stay pretty close to that $19 million, you know, somewhere between 19 and 20 is probably where we end up. And then we carry a 2.5% contingency into construction, it's a little less than a half million dollars for change orders and things like that. Plus all the other kind of costs that we accumulate through this process, puts us at about 22.3 million total project cost.
It's going to cost half a million dollars for the SCADA integration?
Yeah, so that's, that's all of the programming, so that's, that's typically in a water plant bid anyways. But we're currently working with Gary, so A to us does SCADA programming as well. So that's part of our professional services, we actually do the programming for the water plant. In a typical water plant where the consulting firm maybe doesn't do the programming, that would be actually part of your construction bid. They would hire an integrator to do that. We're a little bit different, where we can actually do that programming ourselves. So, we'd like to pull that number out, just so it's called up.
Plus now the Department of Health is requiring that we do asset management of almost everything in water treatment plants, so the valves, the piping, and all that, so that'll be included in here too, because that's going to be a, well, to do with our existing ones, which they'll help us with. Brendan will be able to take care of a lot of it, but they'll need some help, but that'll include that with this too, so.
So, yeah, 22.3 million is our total project cost estimate. And then we do have the, kind of the other, what I'll call like, integration costs as far as other, you know, we've drilled the wells, we put that water main in, Woodland Cove, we need to decommission those wells, and we have that potential line down Highway 7 that needs to go in in the future. So, we'll add, those are additional costs that we need to be mindful of. But for the water plant itself, about 22.3 million is the estimated all-in cost.
The direction, the piping along Highway 7, when that's like far out in the future, right? Or is that planned for like, same time, or?
Probably not too far out, but not like the same year, maybe, maybe next five years.
Yeah. So, if we have some additional commercial maybe in Woodland Cove, we might drive it, or in that area. So, but I'd say in five years, or less.
Can I have any schedule slide? All right, disappeared. So, general schedule, so we're hoping to wrap up design by the end of June and advertise the project.
You first have to bring it back to council.
Yes, for recommendation for award, or, sorry, recommend, request to advertise.
Yes.
That'll be coming to you in June.
Oh, it will.
Yeah, so we plan to have final plans and specs by the end of June.
Okay, well, that's, our next meeting is the 16th.
We'll bring you advertisement recommendation, or recommendation to advertise the project, so we can advertise it.
Yeah, you want approval of plans and specs and going off for advertisement of, of, okay, all right, on the 16th?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right.
And we'll advertise it then to June, we'll open bids at the end of July. And assuming bids come in where we expect them to, we'll move forward with construction.
In sometime in August, okay.
Yeah, so we have an award, I think our, potentially award, the first meeting in August.
August.
Which is.
Is there something?
August 2nd. 4th.
4th, okay.
I won't be here.
So hopefully, bids come in where we want them to be, and we can, we can award and move through the process and.
All right.
Get started, hopefully, I mean, the idea would be that they can do footings and some site prep and things like that this fall.
Yep, they do underground work. They'd probably work on concrete all winter. And we estimate about two years for construction. So if we start August timeframe, August, September timeframe this fall, they'd finish, it'd be fall of 2027.
Okay. All right, questions? Comments? At least, we're moving forward. Yes, thank you, Erin.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
So next, we're moving on to approve a change order for the 2025 Street Improvement Project, I believe that's Ms. Foskey.
That is, thank you, Mayor, Council. Included in the packet for your consideration tonight is change order one for the 2025 Street Improvement Project. The first item is for some fabric on Windridge Trail. So, fabric is used to keep silts from pumping into the, into the section and for strength. It wasn't something that we found in the pavement cores, which is surprising, because right where the two cores were, that's where the construction inspector said they should have hit the fabric, but they didn't. It's a small item, we estimated it at just over 35, excuse me, 3,400, but they actually ended up using about a third of the quantity that we estimated, so it'll be less than that. So that's the first item. And then the second item is for resurfacing of Williams Lane. So throughout the years, council has looked at and supported doing some overlays, just to kind of weather the storm, if you will, for some of these roads that are in poorer condition, and we won't be getting to in the next handful of years. We did Halsted Lane back in 2020. There's a type, a couple typos in the memo, it was Hunter's Trail that we did from 92 to the, to the regional trail, and that was last year. And then also, there was Morning View Terrace back in 2023. So we've, this has been, you know, something that the council supported in the past, and so we thought since Aztec was in town, if they would be willing to give a price for Williams Lane. So that's just off of Halsted there, pavement condition score is 32, so it's in, it's in poor condition. But it's not on the radar, radar for a capital improvement plant, capital improvement project. It doesn't have water main in it with the condition of the road. You know, you'd expect to see a water main extension street reconstruction project. So, we're a ways, staff anticipates a ways out on that project. So, we, like I said, we asked Aztec, the contractor for this year's project, to get a price. And so they did provide us a price of just over $36,000 to overlay Williams Lane. But they also talked to us about this ultra-thin bonded wear course. It's, it's similar to an overlay, but there's a polymer, so it's something in the, in the mix that they, that they use. It's, it's a, they've had success with it. They talked to both Gary and I about it. We thought this would be a good candidate to try it out, it's, you know, it's a cheaper product to put in place, and we can provide residents of Williams Lane with a better driving surface for a period of time until it's, it's time to go and reconstruct that road. So, we included it with this, with this change order. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have about the proposed change order.
How's the drainage on Williams?
That's got a ditch on the, once as it comes in and goes to the culvert through there, so we, we've never had any issue with that.
My question though, so this would be kind of a pilot program, if you will, but does it have enough traffic on it to even warrant the pilot? You know, will, will you be able to?
Not much traffic, but it'll be interesting to see the freestyle. It's the same thing they use, they said on Highway 7 when they redid that. So, basically the way it was described, they, he, he wants, he loves selling the product, he thinks it's a great product. He says, they hate putting down because it is such a time-consuming hard product to put down. And the way I understood it was, you know, most pavers, when you pave, you have two inch service, so you start with two and a half inches and you have, tilt your, the, the, you know, as the paper's going, it flattens it out for you. This actually is, is put down flat and has almost like, the way you described it was almost like a pounding system that actually pounds it in, so as it's going over cracks and stuff, it's helping to fill that in too, so you get a lot better wear. They have a lot less reflective cracking, it'll come through, but it takes a lot longer. And it's just a real sticky gooey substance that goes down beautifully, and they, and they've had great success with it, so.
And so then it has to dry or cure?
I mean, like, it's like anything else with pavement, I think, I think they kind of roll it and that's it. You know, I mean, then it's, you know, I mean, it's not like, you know.
Yeah.
Like super wet or anything, but it's like pavement, so from what we've, from what we've looked at and stuff and what they sent, I mean, it looks like it's a heck of a product, so, I mean, it could be, you know, and like. I mean, it could be, you know, and like you say, we've had great success with this. We started with Wildwood way back in, I want to say 2020, 2016? We started doing that first stretch, and it's been great. So I mean, we're really, we, we've gotten good success out of doing these temporary milling overlays to extend life, so. You know, I mean, it's, this will help here, I mean, we've done, you know, so many of them now, just to help extend it. So now maybe we can take a, a rest period between getting a lot of projects and really start saving up the money to get them done, so. This is another one, I think, it'll be interesting to see how this wears and how it holds up, so.
So the, my only question is, do we have the money in our road fund? 30, an extra 36,000, okay.
2078, well, yeah.
Total is, yeah.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, okay, any other questions? Then, all right, anything else? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve change order one for our 2025 Street Improvement Projects, which is project, city project number 01-25?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Peter, Mr. Vickery. I need to look at your, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we'll move on to our next item, which is approve our Public Safety Training Center quotes.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, we've gotten to the end of the quote gathering process for the Public Safety Training Center that we talked about, I think, back in March. Again, that is to do some construction work in that vacant space that's kind of been storage, right? Or it's, well, it's the, it's the gun, you know, the former gun range, I guess we'll call it. But we're utilizing the space for an advanced training system, Milo, which will come after this. This is just for the construction work, so the partition wall, some of the finishing work in the, in the Milo area, some HVAC and electrical work. And then a, basically a garage door to get access to the storage area from the, the parking garage. So we've gotten two quotes from them, one from DDK Construction and another one from Villa Mill Construction. The DDK came in at just, just over $139,000, which is essentially what they said it was going to be beforehand. And then the other one from Villa Mill Construction, who's in Minatrista here, was at 179. The proposed funding for this, which I didn't indicate in here, but we kind of talked about before, was to utilize some of the public, or all of the public safety grant money that we received in 2023. That balance is 116,000, so not quite enough to, to cover this. What we propose is to, to do this, and, and then when we do the, the Milo product, or Milo system, whatever that difference is, I think it'd be, you know, almost $20,000. We would just add that to the equipment certificate and, and do that at that point in time. So that'll come at a later time, we'll have to consider that. You'll have to make a decision as, as a city council, if we want to do that this year or next year. It does time out well with the water treatment plant and, and selling that bond, that we can do an equipment certificate at that time for the Milo system and the, the remaining balance of the construction. So what we're recommending tonight is to proceed direct to me to enter into an agreement with DDK Construction in the amount of 139,350 to get that work done. Likely completed this summer. It's a, it's not a huge project, but we'd have to get it on their schedule, and then they'd have to, to complete it.
Questions?
Entertain any questions, yes.
Can you say those numbers again? So we have how much already given to us? 116,000.
We have 116,000. The, the bid quote for this was 139, so that's 23,000 difference, which we would add on to the equipment certificate for the Milo system.
Do we know how much the Milo system is going to be?
It's right at about 100,000, I believe.
Okay, so we'd need an equipment certificate for 123, for, for everything over there.
And we most likely will need, have some of our other equipment purchases as we get through the budget process in the fall here. So I mean, it could be a certificate of, we'll just, you know, see how, you know, bring it to council and stuff, you know, what, what the, obviously, department heads have for their requests and stuff. But, um, yeah, it could be a 3, 400,000 dollar, maybe total certificate, depending on.
Right, no, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying. I was just saying for the police portion or whatever.
Sure.
I just want to make sure that we understand what the Milo system's going to cost, because I don't want, you know, I don't want to move forward with this, and then the council says, oh, the Milo is too expensive. So just so you know, it's about 100,000, give or take, and we'll have, have to add another 23,000 that we'll be doing an equipment certificate for, as Brian said, adding it to the other equipment.
The estimated total project cost for everything is about 250,000. We have, you remarked about $10,000 for storage shelves and things like that for the storage area, so that we can actually organize and store things in that space.
Can we get any money from the crime prevention?
That's what I asked.
So we, we did, but not, not for this. Craig requested, I don't know if you want to give a little update on what you requested and what they've kind of allocated for us.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of council. So we were in desperate need of a ballistic shield that's rifle-rated. So God forbid, we got hit by a rifle round, and they're pretty expensive. So the crime fund actually agreed to pay for it, but then we looked at some federal grants. And right now, we're waiting to see if we're going to get a federal grant for that. If we do, then my idea would be to go to the crime fund and see if we could use that money for drones, just because that's something that I think we could really use, especially with the wooded areas out here. We could certainly also ask the crime fund for additional monies for Milo. I'm just not sure how much of a dent they'll put in, you know, with that kind of.
They have money, they, they have, they have quite a bit.
Yep.
So they could help out.
Well, we'll ask.
We'll, we'll kind of ask very nicely, and, yeah.
How much are the ballistic shields?
This one was around 8,500, you know, they're, they're pretty expensive, you know.
And are you just getting one?
Just one.
Okay.
Yep, and then that, that will always stay in, that's always in a squad that's on the road. So if somebody comes in for the night and day shift comes in, then we switch it in the trunk, so it's, it's always out there.
Okay.
Yeah, they should be able to help, more than $8,500.
I agree.
And, you know, I've gotten onto them about having the golf event on a city council night, because otherwise other people could participate. But Craig, Craig, I think, will be the only one from the city there, maybe some other officers potentially.
No, you participated last year, didn't you, Ms. Lacy?
I came in second.
And it was raining.
It was raining.
Pouring rain, so. Are you participating again?
I have to be here.
Okay.
I think I could win this year.
Yes, you, you might be able to. So maybe share that with them, that maybe a Tuesday night would be better, so, all right.
I think it's the golf clubs are closed on Mondays.
Oh, oh, okay. All right, well, maybe we'll change our meeting next year. There you go.
Or they could do it on the second Monday.
Yeah, there you go, second Monday, all right. All right, so any other questions regarding this item? Are we even in favor of providing or giving instructions to enter into an agreement with DDK Construction for the amount of 139,350 for the finishing off of the Milo? Space, we'll call it the Milo space now. We used to call it the gun space, but Milo space. Yeah, Milo is easier, all right. Thank you, Mr. Vickery, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Govern, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we'll move on to staff reports.
Madam Mayor, the only thing I have is the bus tour is tomorrow night, and I believe it's sold out. So it should be, I think the, the poor weather is moved, has moved through, maybe we'll get another round, but I think tomorrow night it should be nice, a little bit cooler.
And it's, and we depart at 5?
Sorry, I just took a sip of my water, 5:30.
5:30, so people should arrive between 5 and 5:30. Boarding will start about 5:15. So I, I, somebody asked me that, and I said, well, all I know is they can't leave without me. All right. I don't think so. Well, we will have fun, and a light, supper is provided, so. Any other, and then do we need somebody for June Planning Commission meeting?
We do.
What day is that, the 27th? No, the 23rd?
30th, well, 23rd, 23rd.
23rd.
Yep.
I might be able to do it, what, okay, put me down, I'll see if I can do it.
I think, we, we for sure have one agenda item regarding the Halsted development.
Okay, all right.
Otherwise, I can do it if you.
Okay, so either me or her Kathleen, keep you posted, all right. Any other staff reports? Then council reports, we'll start with Brian, anything?
I did attend the last planning commission. The only agenda item was tabled, so I'm not going to really report.
It went quite quickly. Well, thank you for taking your time. But that does remind me, when are we going to bring back the ordinance changing the park commission meetings?
I know David's working on that, potentially as early as the next meeting.
Okay, but I think that was just a great idea, so. Okay, and then any?
Nothing.
Okay, Peter, nothing? So our next fire commission meeting will be on the 17th, and we're going to be talking again formula, and we'll see where that goes. We've, we've met, and we've talked, and we know what we think would be best for everyone, not just for Minatrista, but for everyone. And we're just hoping that the other players will play, so we'll see.
Yes, I have another meeting tomorrow with.
Okay.
Mound and St. Bonnie.
Okay.
So we will continue talking.
And then I just have another question. I know you mentioned something about possibly being able to do the water tower next year? Is there, are we moving in that direction, okay?
I can give a little update on that. So, so A2S will likely be providing a task order to do some modeling, and maybe some, it'll be eventually some cost estimating of the interconnects with St. Bonnie. If we can get that dialed in and, and potentially do that work this late summer, fall, then we can likely do the water tower next spring.
Okay, because St. Bonnie is agreeable, where we could kind of work out a deal.
I think so.
I, I have that plan, you know.
Yeah, we, we might talk about, there's a piece of property that St. Bonnie is interested in, maybe annexing of, of Minatrista. Everybody would have to, I mean, we'd have to agree to it, but we could get more into that if that actually.
We'll keep you posted, yeah, we'll keep you posted.
It's, it's a, it's a parcel on Highway 7, kind of right at the 7 and 92 intersection.
Surrounded by St. Bonnie.
Yeah.
But it's Minatrista.
Going across from St. Bonnie Liquors. Um, a little bit farther to the west, but right on, right on the intersection of 7 and 92 on the southeast corner.
And Mayor Eiler has asked if we're interested in giving it to them, and I said, well, we might be able to work out a deal. So we're, we're going to work on that.
How do we have that property?
I have no idea. Okay. Okay, that was before my time. Not everything is.
If it really works out, we'll be able to, this fall, consider advertising for bid to do the water tower rehab.
And I just wanted to, since you brought, you know, you mentioned that, and I just thought, oh, we should just mention kind of what we're thinking. Again, this isn't just in the very, very beginning stages of what we're thinking we might be able to do. So that'll be coming forward for more discussion, so. And then I'll be going to the Northwest League next, let's see, Wednesday, the 11th or whatever. And then we have our, we have our mediation on the 12th. So we'll, I think we kind of understand where we're all, where you're all coming from, so we will do our very, very best. So, other than that, I think we're, we're done.
Motion to adjourn? So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Lacy, all those in favor signify with aye. All those opposed? Guess what, motion passes 5-0, I can't imagine why.
I want to know who votes no against adjourning the meeting.
I don't think it would really matter, even if you, we have to do it once, don't we?